This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today. It's Darren, sorry, Darren was the second.
I'm all messed up now.
I know. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Next up is our recognition Employee of the Month, Dr. Bullmore.
If it pleases the board, we'd like to recognize the Classified Employee of the Month for May, and we have two, Ms. Sarah Carlyle and Ms. Megan Dear from the high school. Sarah and Megan have worked vigorously to navigate and communicate our new attendance policies. They pull data weekly and collaborate with the Attendance Committee members to ensure they have all relevant and necessary information to help us work with our students and parents. Sarah and Megan then take phone calls from parents regarding attendance, listening empathically, or empathetically, sorry, and keeping calm and de-escalating demeanor. The Classified Employee of the Month Award is sponsored by the Excelsior Springs Hospital, who proudly supports the students and staff at Excelsior Springs High School. So we are very proud of Ms. Sarah Carlyle and Ms. Megan Dear, and we want to congratulate them.
All right, next up is our 22, 23 retirees, Dr. Bullmore.
So we have a lot, we have 14. On behalf of the Excelsior Springs School District and school community, we want to thank these 14 retirees for their selfless dedication and contributions to generations of students through educating over the last several years. We'll call them up here in not necessarily a specific order. If you would come up here, we have a gift for you, a retirement clock. We also have a one-year membership to the Missouri Retired Teachers Association, and then a lifetime pass for activities. So you can watch any of the activities of your life, Dr. Bullmore. So first, we have Ms. Nancy Jo Block, paraprofessional. She's been with the district for 19 years. We have Mr. John McGaw, custodian, who's been with the districts for 12 years. Deborah McGrane, paraprofessional, this is her second year in the district. Joyce Parton, custodian, 18 years in the school. Sherry Bounder, health services instructor at the Career Center, 19 years in the school. Marcy Komo, early childhood special education, 30 years in the school. Coach Damon Fishback, special education, five years with the district and 33 years in education. Mr. Joe Grine, Activities Director, 29 years in the school. Ms. Carrie Kirkendall, Process Coordinator, six years in the school district and 24 years in education. Captain John Potter, firefighter and EMT teacher, 13 years at the school district. Ms. Net Sheldon, Dr. Net Sheldon, elementary principal, three years in the school. Ryan Sloan, elementary principal, three years at Excelsior and 28 years in education. And the better half of the Sloans, Diane Sloan, elementary teacher, two years at Excelsior and 31 years in education. Thank you guys so much for your contribution to students, your dedication and unwavering support of the entire community. We're going to round the floor. Marsha Ralligan.
Excelsior Springs? You have to say that out loud. 37 years!
So thank you everyone for your contribution to students and for the community. We appreciate you very much.
In case everybody's wondering, I have over 200 years of experience.
I feel like we have no staff left.
The Career Centers, all because of real estate.
Oh, please come back.
Just give them a couple of seconds to clear out before we move on to the next.
Yeah, nobody wants to do the MSBA.
Student recognition. All right, next up on our recognition is student recognition, Mr. Joe Grine.
All right, thank you for taking time. And I was going to recognize some of our music students and our theater department. There's a lot going on at the school right now. We have Senior Sunset, we have Magic Museum, so I'm just going to let you know who they are. If any of you happen to be here, which I haven't seen any of them, feel free to come on up. We recently had 10 students qualify for the State Music Festival down in Columbia, and I'm going to read their names. We had two of them receive gold ratings. Nick Lewis with trombone solo, Leslie Bassmer with the bass clarinet solo. Silver ratings were Logan Houston in vocal, Zion Miller with tuba solo, and then the brass sextet of Austin Collins, Cole Dickey, Nick Lewis, Kate Marker, Josh Oldham, and Lana Ryan, they also received a silver rating. So wonderful job. Everybody that went down received at least a silver. In the old scale, that was a two, one-two. So excellent job by all parties. Also, we just recently received word that our theater department, for their musical, The Addams Family, received two nominations, the Starlight Blue Star nominations, which is a really big deal. One was for best set design and construction, and then the other nomination was for best costume design and construction.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is the MSBA delegate report. Darren.
I've got a little video here.
Welcome to the May edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the issue of swatting and the calls that targeted numerous Missouri schools recently. Swatting calls are hoax phone calls that report serious crimes, attempting to fool emergency services into sending a SWAT team to respond to a supposed emergency. In late March, there were at least nine such threats made to schools across Missouri in one day. John McDonald is the COO of the Council for School Safety Leadership and is recognized internationally as the architect of the Columbine High School Post-Tragedy Security and Emergency Management Plan. He says that dealing with swatting calls is complicated for many reasons.
Without a good emergency operation plan, schools really struggle in the knowledge of what do we do now? How do we manage this moment in time? And how do we effectively keep everybody safe and not shut schools down? It's a challenge. It's one more threat that we're dealing with now. And as the AI, our official intelligence, issue continues to grow, we're going to see more of these type of threats. And we have to be prepared for that. We have to have really honest, direct conversations about how we're going to manage that. And if you do that early and you tabletop these things, talk about it, walk through your process together, and make sure everybody knows what their role and responsibility is, you'll have the opportunity to manage these without necessarily closing your schools. Now, there's times when you'll have a threat that reaches such significance that you have to take action to immediately protect everybody and everything. And that's part of the learning that we'll do together over the course of the next year through CES, MSBA, and our partner districts all over the state of Missouri.
Regarding the importance of an emergency operations plan, don't forget that the deadline is approaching to sign up for your district's free emergency operations plan development tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering a subscription to the MoEOP development tool at no cost for two years, but you must be signed up by June 1st of this year. There's no time element for completing emergency operations plans. The only time element is for participation, so please sign up now to take advantage of this crucial school safety resource. Visit the MSBA website for more information. MSBA Summer Summit is set for June 16th and 17th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable sessions and to connect with your colleagues from school districts across the state. Summer Summit attendees will have the opportunity to hear a dynamic keynote speaker at the summit. Dr. Jaclyn Sanderland, better known as Dr. Jackie, will be the featured speaker at the Summer Summit's General Session Breakfast at 8:00 AM on Saturday, June 17th. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward "why not" attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her passion for guiding young people has garnered national recognition.
Jackie, we were so impressed with your scholars and the work that you've done to turn the school around that the National Lacrosse League wanted to give you this check for $50,000.
Dr. Jackie's presentation will focus on the five Cs: community, collaboration, capacity, connections, and creativity. Visit the MSBA website for more information about the Summer Summit. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration, including the offices of President-elect and Vice President. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. And finally, keep an eye on MSBA's social media pages for good news stories about the amazing program, students, and staff in public schools across Missouri. These stories are tagged with "It's Our Why." May begins with a different Belcher Scholarship winner featured each day. Keep an eye out for your region's winner. These students are great reminders of why we do what we do. And with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in June for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, anything further?
No, sir.
All right, we have no visitors tonight for the visitors forum, so we'll move on to cabinet reports. And first up is business operations. Dr. Bullmore.
If it pleases the board, just talk a little bit about business operations happening throughout the district. We'll start with transportation. So as I reported last month, we updated routes after spring break to consolidate some of those routes, and that has allowed us to, or allowed First Student actually to cut some of those costs to reduce drivers required on a daily basis. And so they're actually going to help us. We talked in the past about coming to you with an amendment for approval that will raise driver pay $2 to get to $18 an hour. Routes and some of the creative things that we've done, working with Kim Green, our Transportation Director, they're actually going to help up that another dollar at their cost for students. So it will be equal pay to everyone around us. The nearest one that will be above us would be Park Hill, which we're just not going to be able to meet that with a larger district. It is bid season, so ARP's went out and people have selected their transportation companies. And so some of the companies didn't get re-elected, such as First Student. And so we're actively recruiting and signing drivers from those districts. And so right now, we have five or six more drivers that will be in our stable next year. So hopefully that will relieve a lot of the stress of our district and our schools and our parents feel with those consolidated routes. So we're really excited about that. And that partnership with First Student, cutting those costs and being able to do those things to support our drivers. Moving along to safety, so as I reported before, we've applied for a $300,000 grant with the state that would allow us to apply some of the security film to some of our glass entryways, hallways, things like that. I think last I talked to Dr. Thomason about this, there was, I think, $40 million from the state, and every school district in the state had applied for it. So we'll see actually how many dollars we get or not, but anything we can get will help our schools and we'll figure out a need, you know, area need to rank those to make sure we get those covered. So that's just an update there. Worked with Jeff Kimsey on completing a five-year plan to update all the doors in the district to be card readers. As you know, the doors have been around here for 20 and 30 years, and some of those keys have, you know, been lost, and we have to update them. And so we're looking at with Lewis, having every door be a card reader, and then once Lewis is complete, we have a five-year plan to have transition all of these to card readers on all the doors, which will help us just turn a card off if someone leaves or it gets lost or something like that. So we're really excited about that opportunity and to increase safety and security throughout our district. And then speaking of the grants, so it's in the proposed budget for the state. Again, we won't know until June 30th, but there's $50 million more dollars in grants that they're hoping to open up next year for safety and security. So if those get opened up and appropriated, we're going to make sure we apply for as many of those to make sure we're as safe and as insecure as possible throughout the district for our students and staff. Moving along to food service, so participation in April skyrocketed, in no small part to providing free breakfast and lunch every day for testing in schools. Research shows that it increases students' awareness, ability to achieve when their bellies are full. And so we did that, and we're happy to do that. There's still some legislation out there. Hopefully, they get some support that would propose back to universal free lunches and breakfasts. So if you know anyone or talk to anyone, let them know we would love that. But participation jumped by nearly 30% for breakfasts and 20% for lunches. So we're really excited about that opportunity. As a career ladder update, so we made it as a district career ladder team, and those plans and the steps that teachers need to complete pending appropriation by the state have been communicated by those district career ladder committee. We really want the district career ladder to be like a for us, by us, for the teachers. You know, I'm kind of their mentor and leader and consigularity, but I don't want to be the person that they go to for all the decisions. That's what the committee's for, and that's what career ladder is meant to be, because it should be for the teachers and for the benefit of students. So that information's going out. Teachers are really excited, really excited about the opportunities that offers for tutoring and other things throughout the district. And then working this summer and then throughout the fall on our new website. So it's needed, upgraded for several years. It's 10 years old now. Dr. Thomason did a great job. We'll redesign that. We're trying to keep as updated as possible, but it's time for a refresh and a redesign, so we'll be working on that. It's not easy to do, but the company we have has built into the contract that they'll do that for us. So we're excited about that opportunity, and we've been working with them. And then that will also come with a new app, so stay tuned. We're going to be ready to roll with technology. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next up is academic services, Dr. Miller.
So thank you, wanted to talk, oops, hold on. Thank you, wanted to go over, as always, literacy update. That's been our big push, especially with letters training. This, at the end of this year, all of Arcade Three teachers and our sped teachers will be done with their first of two years of letters training. The majority of districts are just choosing to send four or five people and then kind of a train the trainer model. And so I'm excited to say that we're one of the very few school districts that is sending every single person to get the actual training in our district, so I'm really proud of that. Again, Jessica Hembry, Jessica Hembry is doing a wonderful job as our literacy coach. Like, this is an incredible amount of work, making sure that you don't have all of your teachers at one time off. So we've scheduled it so that only four teachers are out of the building at any given time, and they're all completing the program at their own pace at different times. Our last teacher should finish on May 13th with Year One, which is bringing us right up to the end of the school, end of the school year. So we're super excited about that. I'm kind of skipping around my page here, but we've got a lot of letters grant opportunities. The state is actually putting a lot of grant funding up until, they're trying to cover both teachers and supplies and all of the things that go into, it's just a very expensive, very time-sensitive program. So I put in for, I think, two separate grants. One of them is actually paying for teachers to do the work that they've already done. So how it works is the teachers put in their letters training, once they're done, which I can't even apply for it until May 13th, I'll bring it back to you. It actually awards teachers $500 just for their work towards that. There are approximately 40 hours of additional work outside of school time that goes into this, that teachers are doing on their own. The work that they're learning about, they actually bring it into their classroom, and they're working with our kids, like testing it out in real time. So I'm really excited about that. So if you want to scroll up next to the next slide, I put grants all over this. Go up one more. I'm making this very complicated for you. You're doing a great job. So the next thing that I wanted to talk about on the literacy update is the Knowledge Project. I have a really good partnership with William Jewel College. We get a ton of our student teachers from them. They send us really, really high-quality student teachers. They actually have a year-long program. Most other universities put their student teachers for a semester, so we get theirs for a year. I have a really good partnership with the lady in charge of that, and she actually put me in contact with Dr. Amy Barth. And what she does is she is in charge of the specific research grant called the Knowledge Project. So William Jewel reached out to her and said, hey, I think that you would enjoy working with Melissa Miller over at Excelsior Springs. We sat down and met. I had no idea what it was. She said she was letter certified, so that got me excited because I'm trying to figure out how to onboard all of our new teachers to get them caught up. I want everyone with the same amount of training. But what Dr. Amy Barth does is she's worked with the leading experts in letters and with the science of reading. It's a grant funding, no different than like the Kaufman Foundation or some of those big giant collectives that put millions and millions of dollars into it. So the Knowledge Project is literally about trying to get research done that show the best, the biggest and the best bang for your buck with kids. What Dr. Amy Barth does is she actually has a set of interventions. She'll come into your school and she takes 150 of our most struggling readers, and then she brings a team of students from William Jewel that are all graduate students, and they work one-on-one with kids while training our teachers how to do those interventions with our kids. So I know I've worked with Dr. Everett, and this is a giant gap in what we have available to our kids, so super excited. I know I talked to her and I said, I know you don't know a lot about this yet, but trust me, come to this meeting and say you really want this. And she did. So super excited to work with Dr. Amy Barth. I reached out to Dr. Thomason and was telling him about it, and his response was, man, we just have a lot of programs going. And I said, it is the best thing I can bring to our students, and it's free. And he was like, I'm all about it. This is great. Let's do this. So they actually work with students for three years, so they follow the same three years with these kids. Start them in, so second, third, and fourth graders will be followed up until, you know, the last cohort is in sixth grade. This will literally change the lives of some of our struggling readers. Super excited about that. I'll actually bring this up again. I just want it on record, I'll ask for a vote from you guys for permission to work with Dr. Amy Barth. She just came out of Houston. She did a case study in them. She had worked with urban school districts, and their test scores went crazy. Like, she literally taught a lot of the kids how to read that were the most struggling. She's now looking for a school, literally, that's just like us. She's looking for a mid-suburban rural school with flatlining reading scores that are struggling with kind of a high-poverty, struggling subgroup achievement. So we are perfect for them, and she is perfect for us. So I'm really excited about that partnership. I've been talking about wit and wisdom, and again, I'll bring that up too. I think you guys actually, you've been hearing me talk about wit and wisdom the whole time. Super excited to say that we're going to go ahead and purchase that K5. I had to slow down 6.8 a little bit. There were some hesitancy, I think, from the teachers. They wanted maybe to look at a bigger choice, look at some outside things. So we're going to work with Jessica Hembry, the literacy coach. She's going to kind of slow-play it, give them a choice, and I think give them more opportunity to really look through the program. But that will definitely be something that I'll bring to you before August, and we'll slowly bring that into play. An additional letters grant opportunity that I have is with supplies that we can actually send home. There's a big push with early childhood and early readers. And one of the things that we purchased are decodable books. They're kind of going back to basics with literacy. So if you think of like the books that you used to get when you were a kid, and it would be like the dog on the log in the bog with a lot of the phonics work. So Jill is probably laughing because they were describing this, and I'm like, you mean how we were taught how to read? And she's like, yes, we're going back to that. So purchased a ton of those books. I didn't have enough for everyone to have a classroom set, so I went to Heather, who I lovingly refer to as my sugar mama, and she found me some grant money to get everyone a full classroom set, and we should be able to send a lot of those books home. Okay, I'm ready for the last slide now. You're doing great. I'm jumping around. Kindergarten screening is done, finished that, and so just wanted to tell you that we had, that's my favorite time because you get the biggest smiles with those kindergartners showing up. So super looking forward to having them show up. Our Brigant screening tool is working really well, and the feedback that I've gotten from all of the principals is that our kindergartners are far more ready this year than they were last year. When you take into account that COVID played a big part in that, I think we're starting to finally get kids built up where they're a little bit more socialized and a little more ready to start kindergarten. This last slide with our MSIP 6 update, just wanted to let you know, again, this is the same that I've been showing you guys, but there's 40% of our accreditation that actually comes from the CSIP, and out of that, we got 98.1% on that portion. I think I, I think I've already told you guys that we missed one point, and I'll be, I, we will get that one point the next time. I'm going to make sure. But Dr. Thomason and I had a meeting with the Arkansas City members that came down, and so super excited that we got 98.1% of the points. So our accreditation, this is our baseline year, and so next year, I'm looking forward to presenting you with student test scores to see how we've grown. That's all I have.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Next up is student services. Dr. Thomason is going to fill in for Dr. Gross.
I know that you received this prior, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of items from Dr. Gross's presentation. And if you take a look on that, the general updates, talks about Student Panorama Survey. So one of the things we want to do is we've really put a focus on gaining more insight into both students and staff's perceptions about how things are going within the school district, how they're operating, where they're successful, where the district can be better to help provide supports. We're really excited about our response rate. We did have an increase in the number of students participated in that, and it's just one more tool we're able to use to try to gauge how students respond to their learning in their classrooms. We're trying to do a better job listening to all of our stakeholders to try to improve and get better. If you take a look at the next page, talks a little about the Clay County Children's Services Fund. If you remember, a couple of years ago, Clay County instituted a small sales tax, and that money went into this fund that has a board that manages all the money that comes in, and there's a big portion of that that goes to public school districts in the Northland. So we were able to generate almost a half a million dollars of expenditures that will all be then reimbursed through the fund. You're talking about, so next year, we're actually budgeting a million dollars because there's so much money coming in currently off the sales tax. All of that money goes directly to services for our students, and it's all things we couldn't have ever have afforded on our own. So I just wanted to highlight one of the components of her, of her office is able to deliver for us is that's additional social, emotional and mental support services, both for our students and our staff. So it's really a good thing to highlight and kind of talk about and acknowledge because that's a lot of money and a lot of support that comes in. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of those things. I don't know if you had any other questions from her report, but I know it's important to review some of those items too.
All right. Next up Superintendent report, Dr. Tomlinson.
Which is always my favorite report. I mean, it's the most, it's the prettiest one, right? So I take a look at our financial status is something that we've done every month. I had updated this. You can kind of see that we're on a very expected trend line there. If you see that, if you notice that decline, it's a nice straight line. What that's telling you is that we are spending at exactly the rate we plan to. Our revenue is exactly what we plan it to be and it's a very controlled pace right now. That's exactly what we want to see. We'll probably see a little bit of a bump come up here. We'll have a little bit of revenue coming in. There's some federal reimbursements that Dr. Gross has coming in. And then after that, we will have our payroll for summer. And payroll, our summer is where you have that drop off as it goes towards the end of the year. So it's very common, it's very cyclical, school finance, but we want to try to end up above where we finished last year. That would be success. So that's always going to be our goal. If you take a look at some of our numbers, even back in November, we were about $1.3 million behind where we were a year prior. And currently we're sitting about $2 million where we, above where we were a year prior. So we've made up about $3 million on our budget. That's something that we're going to try to continue and try to build next year's budget that we'll be talking about soon. I did put some information in here about some of our budget assumptions. We'll cover that more later though. Take a look at our attendance, it's holding pretty steady. We actually have really good attendance considering we had testing. We also offer some free meals. I think a lot of those things contribute to good attendance, but you can see our numbers are actually holding up pretty well right there, especially in our secondary.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions?
Any numbers on reassessment yet?
No reassessment, so just so everyone knows, it's a reassessment year when it comes to property value and assessed valuation in the state. So what we'll receive is when we set the tax rate hearing, which will be in September, by then we'll receive information from the county, both Ray County and Clay County, and they'll say how much your assessed valuation has gone up. And that's how we calculate all of our taxes and our revenues, but we won't know that until we set the tax rate. So that's one of the assumptions you have in building a budget for next year is we're building a budget with revenue expectations on an assessed valuation that we don't know what it's going to be. Luckily for us, the person with the most expertise in the state of Missouri is sitting in the back of the room and he's going to speak about that because he knows more about assessed valuation than I'll ever forget. So is that right, Joe?
I don't know about the last part. I will speak on it.
He will speak on it. So we do have, we have a resident expert at least to talk about it, but it's something we're monitoring closely and we're trying to plan for. That's probably going to be what our bonus comes in. We're going to, we're going to plan for what we've got. And then if that, if we get a good bump from that, that's just going to be a bonus for us.
All right. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, moving into our discussion items. First up is Dr. Katie Andreessen with the Swope Kids Care Clinic at the ECC.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Katie Andreessen. I am the principal of the Early Childhood Center and tonight I get to give an update and maybe an introduction to some of you about a future clinic that will be opening up in our building. So a few years ago, Dr. Dan Hayne decided that we would bring forth to our board adopting Head Start. We had a building in town that was self-serving and they decided to close that and we took on that big feat of trying to make sure that we could support those students who had been supported in our community. Once that began, we began to realize that there's a lot of requirements that go with Head Start. And because of our community and kind of where it sits, we didn't really have all the resources we need to meet some of those needs. Not only was it just that we couldn't meet the requirements, but that we weren't meeting the needs of our students and their medical, mental, all their healthcare. So I was able to begin working with a great group of people to start with a vision of bringing something just super extraordinary to our community. And we are so close now. We, you know, it's been like two years, we've talked about it. We're so very, very close to opening up a clinic. And when I say that, it's going to have medical, dental and optometry for birth to age 18. So when we started this endeavor, we had zero pediatricians in our, in our town, in our city. And now the hospital has gained a pediatrician and now we're going to be able to add another service. So we've doubled in Excelsior Springs in a very, very short amount of time. So that's been very exciting. And tonight I have a lot of people here with me and I hope I, I recognize all of them because all of them have been a big part of this journey and then I'm going to kind of move forward and, and hand it off. But tonight I have Nurse Kristen Van Cleve Smith. Stand up please when I say your name. Really none of this could be possible without Chris. She has managed a lot of the day-to-day efforts that go into making this happen. So it's been a, a pretty significant deal to have her onboard and the work that she's done's been miraculous. Also I have Ms. Sandra Reese with me. She is our touch point through Mark Head Start. And Mark Head Start has been a major contributor to making this clinic happen. So we're very appreciative of that. Also with me tonight is Dr. Shelley Cooper. She's the CEO and founder of the Come On Now Association. She is working on an app that allows parents to get reminders about appointments, have their appointments in there and a keeping track so people remember to show up. I also have Mr. Luke Porter here, who is our site superintendent from Purdon Construction. He is putting in all the hard day-to-day work to make sure that this clinic is, is happening. And if any of you've stopped by, it, it really looks amazing. Also is Dr. Kenneth Thomas. He is the executive vice president of Children's Services. Dr. Thomas and I talk frequently as this progresses forward. Also from Swope Health is Dr. Naomi Jamal. And she is the chief, chief health officer from Swope. And I also have Ms. Angela Smart, who is the chief development officer from Swope. I have one more to introduce, but it'll be just a second if you'll go to the next slide, please. So the big piece of the puzzle here is that this is a very unique opportunity. We, for probably the first time, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, are combining a healthcare provider, services for students through Mark Head Start and a school district together to accomplish this for children. So it's really kind of a really neat experience to be a part of. The big piece of that though is collaboration and entering that shared commitment. So again, we've been partnering, all of us together since the beginning. And so also we went to establish a foundation for the next step. We are going to become a model for future sites. And so that's very exciting news that, that we get to be the first to do that. Can move on. You went one too far, so back up. Perfect. Okay. So not only have I introduced people from different groups, but we have received additional funding, not only from Mark Head Start, but Swope and Mark Head Start have also applied for HERSA grants, which are health grants. And so we've been able to win three of those so far to bring in more money for our clinic. And it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's very impressive work by both Head Start and Swope Health. And you can go on now. So we're going to have Swope Health Kids Care at Excelsior Springs Early Childhood Center. The plan, unless somebody changes their mind, is to have that open and ready to show in August when school starts. We're going to have a lot of traffic on our campus as Lewis is joining us. So we're hoping to get a lot of people onsite to be able to walk through the clinic and then we can get the ball rolling to begin services. At this time, I want to present to you Jaren Raven, JD. He is the CEO and president of Swope Health and he has a few words to share with you. And then after this, you can ask any questions.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Uh oh, I'll try that again. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, thank you. I, I'll just mention a quick, a few things about Swope Health. Dr. Kate, you got very well. Swope was founded in 1969 at the bottom of a Baptist church in Kansas City, Missouri. We convinced the pastor that if we could just have 20 volunteers, see a few, a few members of the church, that we could do good work. That first year we saw 2,000 patients and then he kicked us out. We ended up wrong. So, but seriously, he didn't kick us out. We outgrew the church and now 53 years later, we're in 19 different communities. We've been serving Excelsior Springs now for the last two years. We have 100 kids that need dental restorative work on the waitlist. And so we hope to get them in as soon as we can in August. We're looking forward to the partnership. We are going to be a part of the community and we're looking forward to continuing to serve. Thank you guys for looking at me. Appreciate it.
Are there any questions?
I went through it today.
Where'd he get that suit? That's amazing.
I had to dress up really fancy today.
Great work. It looks awesome.
Really, thank you.
All right. Next up is approval of the Series 2023 Certificates of Participation Resolution. Dr. Tomlinson, Ben Thompson with Gilmore and Bell.
I'm going to go ahead and defer to Ben and Joe as the great minds that sit behind all the wonderful financing for our upcoming elementary project.
Well, hello.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you. Is this on? Everybody can hear me okay?
Not really.
Okay. I'll speak up then, so. Well, thanks for having us. Congratulations on passing your ballot initiative to shift that levy over into your operational funds for this lease. Really quickly, I know you've got a busy night and you've got a lot going on, but I just want to go back over the plan and cover everything that has gone on and we plan to go on. So we're all on the same page and there's some documentation we've been flying around and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. I don't think that it got uploaded unfortunately, so I'll, I'll send you some numbers, but we have had a few things happen and one of the reasons we're here tonight with a different type of resolution is that we want to take advantage of some opportunities that we have in the market to go ahead and access some money. So basically what happened since you called your election in January to transfer that levy over to do a lease, is that we've seen some banks fail here in March and that has caused a little bit of a backup in our market. And when I say a backup, I mean, that means your ability to borrow money, those interest rates have gone down some as people have shifted their money back into bond funds. We didn't know how long that would last or if that was temporary or permanent. We've got some other indicators, including inflation and our Federal Reserve Bank that are saying that things need to go up. So in the background, in case you were superstitious, we didn't tell you this, but about the first week of March, we started working on all the documents. In order to do a lease in Missouri, you've got notice requirements, you've got federal regulatory agencies that regulate you. It takes about eight to 10 weeks to get this done and we're here now, basically as soon as you can do this after your election, you've got to wait 30 days. We're ready to price your bonds or price your certificates and enter the market tomorrow morning. And that was with purpose because of the fact that we had this backup in, in interest rates. We also in Missouri have a unique situation where we haven't had a lot of debt issuance since the start of the year. Typically how investors allocate their funds is by the year, by the calendar year. So the sooner you can be out borrowing money, the better, the more demand that you'll have for your certificates. And the more demand you have, the lower interest rates. Our job tomorrow is we're going to take our 350-plus institutional bond salesmen and they're, they have access to I think over 300,000 investor accounts. And they're going to go out and see who's willing to pay the highest price for your certificates in $5,000 increments. So we're going to do everything we can to minimize those yields for you all or lower the interest rates. And one of those things we can do that with is by increasing demand. So you will be the third district among our clients, just because of how your board meeting fell, to have your certificates out in the marketplace. So with little bit of paper leading up to this point in Missouri, with, that carries the double tax exemption in Missouri, we hope that we have some good demand. We had some good results on our two sales today. So we have sped the process up to try to be here. That's not to try to make it less transparent or less communicative, so bear with me while I go over some of the plan and remind you about that just for a second, because I want to make sure we're all on the same page about what the resolution is this evening. So we have this opportunity, we have some lower interest rates. As Dr. Tomlinson said, we've got an assessed, or a reassessment year coming up. What does all of that mean? That means that we have an ability to go out and borrow some money, but we're going to transfer levy from your debt service fund to your operating fund. And that is going to be a revenue stream based on the amount of assessed value that you have. We don't know what that assessed value is going to be. Our best guess is that it's going to go up some. There has been some inflation, but we're trying to be very conservative. So all the, the information that we're showing you is probably half of the growth that you're going to have within this given year. So we hope that this all looks better by the time you get your information in August, which will be what your final assessments are and that you've got some more freedom and flexibility within those cash flows. But anytime that we shift revenues and shift the allocation of those resources, we have to be concerned about how that's going to look in the future. So we model future conditions. We're moving 70 cents over in your operational fund. We feel very comfortable that only 50 cents of that, so really only five sevenths of that new revenue you will need for your lease payments. And we're trying, because these are operational dollars, we're trying to minimize the amount of money that you're actually issuing or the amount of debt that you're issuing and still able to get the projects done that you want to be able to get done. So part of what we've done is we partnered with MoCat, who is helping you with investing that money. Because once you have that money, it's all there for you, but you're not going to be able to spend that all at once. You know, you've got a construction cycle, those bills will come in over time. And they have indicated to us that you might earn $800,000 or $900,000 as a minimum on those monies, once we get that money in the door. So the plan right now is to only put about $34.2 million into your project fund, actual money that you have for projects to, to expend on the elementary school. With the idea that the budget is 35 million, that's what we planned for 35 million, but we're only going to issue that 34.2. Hopefully you'll earn up to that 35 million. Just know if project costs overrun, there's a couple $3 million that you could go back out and access in the future if you needed. But because these are operational dollars and because anything that happens will impact your future operating budgets, we want to make sure we're being very conservative and putting you in a position to borrow the least amount of debt possible. Contrast that with the general obligation side, we're willing to be a little bit more aggressive on general obligation debt because any downturn in your economy does not impact your operational budget. So you can still educate your kids every day and you also have ad valorem tax power. We don't ever want to raise your tax rate when we go out and do a no tax increase bond issue. We mean it. We hope that you never have to do that. Typically those are stress tested to where you'd have to incur two or three consecutive great recessions to have to raise your taxes. But the fact of the matter is you have the power to do that. So you are in fact required by state law to do that. So we're a little bit more willing to be aggressive on the debt service side of things. On the lease side of things, we're much more conservative. And so we're very concerned about keeping that, those borrowing costs as low as we possibly can and minimizing that impact to your operational budget. So all of those factors combined, what we're trying to get done leads us to this resolution tonight, which is a little bit different. I know in the past you're used to us coming down here and having final rates to show you and say, this is where your bonds ended up today, your certificates ended up today. You know, should you approve this? This is how the sale will go. We actually are in the market right now, marketing your certificates, but we won't do that until tomorrow morning. So we'll start our marketing period and take orders tomorrow morning for a few hours and really try to drive those yields for you. But we are doing this in a different order so that we can access capital as quickly as we can or get that money to you as quickly as we can in these good market conditions, but still have an opportunity to talk to you about the plan and dialogue with you in case there's anything that concerns you about what's going on. So what we're looking at is a 25-year financing. What we're looking at is interest rates at about 4.5% is right, right where you're going to end up on that 25-year financing, which historically in the grand scheme of things is, is really, really good. The day I started, I like to tell this story, almost 16 years ago, you could borrow out you could borrow out money one year in the state of Missouri, for the state of Missouri, at the highest grade credit that you can be. They carry the highest credit rating possible at 3.56%. So you're not even 1% above what you could borrow money for one year, borrowing money out 25 years. So even though rates have come up a little bit over the last year and a half, you're still in a great position to be able to borrow money at very, very low interest rates. So that's what we're looking at, 4.5%. And again, on the mechanics of this, one of the things that this will require is that at some point down the road, in all likelihood, you're gonna want to move some of this debt back over into your general obligation debt. One of the, you know, as you recoup bonding capacity, as you get some of those abilities back, you can move that back over into general obligation debt. And as a reminder, the reason why we did it this way through a lease is the state caps you at a number in your bonding capacity. So you don't have the ability to go out and bond over a certain amount, which was only about $20 million this year. So you wouldn't have had the ability to actually complete that elementary school. You would've had to wait three years, five years, seven years. We don't know, because construction costs are inflating right now at 13% or 15%. We wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to do this. This is how the plan came about. So you will have the opportunity to get that done, but in the future, you'll have to move that over in all likelihood. But because rates have stayed low and because of our conservative assumptions, we estimate that that'll be 20 years. So maybe the last five years, if you really wanted to or if you needed to, you could move that over. But the plan is that the levy will cover you for that time and then some. And especially, we'll do so if we get higher growth than what we're assuming, which we think we're gonna have. The other part of this, as I mentioned, 70 cents and only 50 cents of that is gonna be used to make these payments. The other 20 cents is gonna go into directly in your operational funds. So we think that you'll have an additional $200,000 to $250,000 available in year one. As we, we're not phasing that levy in, but as you see that revenue coming in, and by year four or five, based on compared to what you're currently bringing in, you'll be up a half a million dollars or more simply from that additional 20 cents. So a lot of moving parts, but we're here to talk about being able to access that capital early because rates are in a good spot right now relative to where they've been. Get that money in the door so you can earn interest on it. We're in a position where actually you can earn more in interest or close to earn money on deposit in your accounts in terms of interest, more than what you're paying out. I mean, there's a chance that you could earn 4.5% or more on your money while it sits there. So nice little opportunity to hopefully get some more projects done and then also bring in some more operating revenue for you. So because we can complete that plan of finance and because the market's in a good shape for us right now, we wanted to move as quickly as we could and come down and put this resolution in front of you with the idea that we would then market that and have final rates for you tomorrow. But again, around 4.5% and 20-plus years, hopefully, of being able to make those payments before you have to do anything with that debt. And in all likelihood, you won't have to probably do anything. That 50 cents will service that debt just fine. But there is a resolution. I take any questions, but I'll pass it off to Mr. Thompson to talk about the resolution.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Always stealing my thunder. He always goes first and speaks way too long. So I'll be brief. What's in front of you is a resolution. As Joe mentioned, it's a little different than normal where we don't have final numbers, final rates built into the resolution. What it does have is a set of parameters, and the parameters are put in there. And as Joe mentioned, they are pre-marketing the certificates. This past week, they will final market the certificates tomorrow. Rates and final prices, when they come in, they have to meet the parameters that are set forth in the resolution. If they are met, then it's a springing event. The resolution is de facto adopted by the board. And then we will get all of the other documents, lease documents, base lease, lease, trust and denture, signed by all the parties. UMB Bank is the trustee, and we'll put together a final transcript. And we will close on this deal on May 24th. So May 24th, funds will be deposited with UMB for use by the district for any projects.
Sounds like we're gonna start building soon. Tim on first.
Move to approve the resolution.
All right, we have a first for approval.
Second.
Second. We have a second by Kalen. Troy was first. Kalen was second. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I'll take 4.5 in this market. Would you like to find out some mortgages for me? I got some people that'd be happy. Oh, yeah, they're six, six and a half.
Kenny wants to know if they need his routing number.
I'm giving my routing number.
May what?
Do you need a signed resolution this evening, once we vote?
No. Once it's voted on, I think my assistant's talked to the lease and we'll get the signature.
All right, hearing no questions or comments, all those in favor of adopting the resolution? And that passes six to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate all your help.
This is the best part coming up.
The best part. We tried to move you forward, but we thought you'd want to hear Joe talk, so. They've been very good.
They've been great. My kids would not have made it.
Next up is the Elkhorn Elementary Data Update. Dr. Shelton. Dr. Shelton and staff.
Yes, these are the official teachers tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about our data, but then they're gonna put you guys to work.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So I am Annette Shelton. I am the principal at Elkhorn Elementary, and I have some third graders with me. So they are super excited to be here. They've been so patient. So let's start with our enrollment and our attendance. We are super excited. Our 90 by 90 has steadily increased every month, and there's lots of things that are playing into that. We have our attendance committee now, so we meet with parents when their child falls below 90% or they missed eight days already in the semester, having those meetings, and those really have helped. I'm just bringing that awareness and talking to those parents in person and saying, hey, your child's attendance matters and we want them to be successful. So we've seen, I think I have one student who has had more absences after that that were not, like doctor's appointments are valid, super valid reasons. They just don't want to come to school. They just can't get out of bed. So, but we also have a little competition between all the classes every month to see who has the highest attendance. And so that bar graph under the, shows you where everyone is. February was a little lower across the board, but, and those classrooms, I announce at the end of the month or the beginning of the next month, they get like 10 minutes of extra recess or whatever their class decides. So it's friendly competition just to encourage your classmates to go to school every day. The other thing that we're doing is that each week, if you're at school every single day, your name goes into a drawing, and I pull out kindergarten through fifth grader to win a prize. And we say their name over the intercom. We did that just this morning. And they come up and they get a prize. We have those smelly pencils, those pens before we were children, that you push down the colors and it writes a different color. Who knew those are back and they're so cool? So we do that, sunglasses, all kinds of fun things. So we can go ahead and go to our ELA data. So this is our DRA. So we, our reading test that we give in September, December, and then we're giving it right now. And you can see where the percentage of students that were on or above grade level, starting in September. We were all very concerned, a little stressed out. But you can see in December, look at the growth that we've made. We went from 0% in first grade to 22.5%. The biggest jump was third grade from 0 to 84.5%. That's these students right here. We also have, we're taking it now, so we're super excited, but overall, 74% of our students from September to December grew at least one level, and several students grew more than one level. But almost three-quarters of our school, every student grew. So we're super excited about that. Like I said, we'll have more information for you in a couple days to see how much growth we made from September to May. We can go ahead and go to, so talking about the ELA and the reason why. Dr. Miller talked a lot about letters, and as she said, all of our kindergarten through third grade teachers went with our sped. And those aha moments, those, oh my gosh, yeah, we used to do this. This is how I learned. Oh, yeah. That whole science of reading is making a huge impact. The teachers are looking at our standards, those Missouri learning standards, and really thinking, hey, is this helping us? How are we going to implement this? What am I learning in my training? And those formative assessments to increase student achievement. So we're super excited, and I will tell you that the kids, they probably don't even realize that's happening. It's just part of what the teachers do. They get that information on a Monday. They come back on Tuesday, and they're implementing it in their classroom to see how they can best help their students. We'll go ahead and go to math. So math, you'll see, this is from the HMH, and this is an assessment that is with our Into Math series. So it's not, our curriculum is aligned to Missouri Learning Standards. Into Math is our resource that we use. Teachers also supplement that also to get students to talk about math, to understand and to be able to express what they know. But this assessment is what comes with this series, and we ask every teacher to give that K through five. So you can see our growth. This is percentage of students on or above grade level. I mean, I look at kindergarten, those little babies came in. We had 11% of our kindergarteners come in in September, and they had some good math sense, but now in April, they were at 71.5. And I really like, the teachers all want to take it again. It's just we're getting to the end of the year because they're like, we know there's more. We know there's more. So they can do that if they want, but we just don't record it to show. The concern that I do have is fourth grade. There's not a lot of growth in that. We went from 39 to 50 and stayed at 50. So that's some conversations that we've had with our instructional coach. Olivia Hockemeyer is our math instructional coach, with how, what's happening in there? Is it something with our curriculum? Is it our assessments? Is it the day-to-day instruction? What do we need to do to make sure that we are setting those fourth graders up for success for fifth grade? Go ahead and scroll. So that's a lot of what I said earlier. They're using their standards for the Into Math. The important thing with math right now is we have students talking about math. And they are here to kind of talk to you a little bit about that. So we do what's called number talks, and we have seven of the Elkhorn teachers that are implementing these as part of their daily math routine. They have not done theirs in a couple weeks because of math testing, but that's something they're used to doing. So I have a short video. Well, it's not short. It's 14 minutes. We're not watching all 14 minutes, but I just want you to get a gist, because then guess what? You guys get to do a math talk with them as the teachers. Okay, so put your math thinking caps on, but we'll go ahead and watch a little bit. Remember, when you have an answer, you can have a thumbs up? And I challenge you to have more than one answer, maybe with fingers. Remember, the symbol for a degree is gonna be this?
She's giving them white tiles.
Start us off. Let's put the answer. Malcolm? Anyone else get 111? Anyone get a different answer? Any other different answers? So who already has one of these two answers? Okay. Who would like to start us off by doing studying and answer? Kane? Can you share what your thinking was? Where the eighth integer come from? Okay, what place are you with that? Anyone tell me where he got that eight and the three from? Chloe? Okay, so it looks like you broke these apart. Okay, and what method is that called again? Please tell you. All right, did anyone do the same method as Kane? Show me if you did. Okay. All right, there's some of you. All right, who has a different strategy? Carolyn?
I did 10 plus three plus seven, that's what equals eight. And then I did eighty plus two, that's thirty. No, 118.
118, okay. Okay, so you wanna go ahead and explain your thinking to us?
Uh, yes.
So that's the gist of it. So several students had the opportunity to, and you can watch the entire video. Several students shared their thinking, and it's interesting to just witness the students, how they're processing math in their head and how they're able to then communicate that. So many times, we stand up as teachers and we're like, okay, it's, you know, this is the answer. You do it and you move on, and the kids are going, I don't get that. But they would get it if they had a chance to kind of manipulate those numbers in their head and make it make sense for them. We're seeing that this will then set them up for more difficult problems. If they're able to kind of do that in their heads and kind of wrap their brain around like place value and number sense, then hopefully, that will expand into the middle school and the high school. That's our goal. So now it is your turn, and they each have very important jobs. So I'm gonna set up for a second. We have our whiteboard here for you. And Ms. Woodrow is going to be the teacher for this. She's gonna write down your answers. Then we have, and I'll put this on a chair, but this is kind of the symbols that you'll need to use. All the students doing this. I agree, and one of the students will explain this a little more to you, okay?
I bet Joe would hold that for you, if you asked him.
Well, you know what? I'll just use this chair. How's that?
Well, it's as tall as Joe. Same thing.
Joe, I did not say that.
I mean, he chose the chair over Joe. I don't know.
There you go. Okay, all right, Chance, you're up.
Hi, my name is Chance Alverton. We are all third grade students at Elkhorn Elementary. We are excited to help you, to help you show off your math skills with a number talk. Don't be nervous. You will just use mental math to solve a digit, a digit addition problem. 78 plus 23.
My name is Carson Marsh. During a number talk, each student solves the problem in their head and uses a variety of hand gestures to help show their thinking. Here are the hand gestures.
These are what they, we took these right out of their flash room. You saw them in the video. They were in the back of the locker.
Fist, put it on your chest if you're still thinking, you have it on. And if you agree, like you think that is the right answer, read that. And then if you have a strategy, you put a finger on your chest, and if you have more than one, how many strategies you have is how many fingers you put on your chest.
Okay, so they're not typically shocked. Come.
You guys are doing great.
You are.
I don't really know what to say about it.
Say your name.
I'm Vivian Woodrow.
I'm Jordan Vick.
I'm Aubrey Kelmore.
Okay, so Vivian's job is to record your thinking, and so she will write down exactly what you say. So they're very concerned because sometimes Ms. Alverton has to write down the wrong thing because that's what the student says. So they want me to tell you. They're gonna write down what you say. Okay, Vivian, you come on up. There's the markers. All right, and Jordan and Aubrey are gonna kind of, they're gonna make you explain your thinking. So they're in charge, okay? All right.
Are you still thinking, Kenny?
Oh, we all have to.
Yes. You have to participate.
I'm gonna blow them away because it's gonna be old school.
I heard your names. I heard Kenny's name.
I heard Kenny's.
I heard Kenny, yep.
I heard Darren.
Ready? Okay, so how I break mine down, right, 78 plus 3 gives you 81. And then you take the 81 plus 20, which gives you 101. That is my strategy. Yep, how I break it down is I always break my numbers down where the second number is a solid number, so it's easier to add in your head, and it makes it where you can add quicker instead of trying to break down. So I break it down to 20, so adding by 10 at a time, it goes very quickly in my head. That's how I break it down.
Y'all supposed to do it again?
Do we agree? Are we doing it?
I just added my strategy and it didn't match to that.
So you have another strategy. Put your finger up.
My strategy didn't work.
You weren't supposed to admit that.
Do you want to share it or no? Okay.
Okay, so, okay, I was just trying to do this math that I'm unfamiliar with. We've seen Ms. Alverton working with the kids. So I think it was 70 plus 20. Um, so I think it was seventy plus twenty.
You wanna phone a friend?
Yes.
He's lost me already.
Mr. Albertson. Uh, and then, um, so seventy plus twenty, ninety.
Just throw some numbers out there till it matches.
Eight plus three.
Oh, I like your strategy.
It's eleven.
Number sense.
I like that strategy.
And add the ninety and eleven? Okay, I did it in my head and it did not match that. Thanks, Mr. Grime, I was able to finish this.
Did you cheat?
He used AI. So yeah, he added the ninety and eleven, which gave him the one eleven. Or one on one, sorry. So yeah, one on one. One on one. Right? Yeah, I was finishing it. Yeah. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a strategy?
What'd you say, sweetie?
Does anybody else have a strategy?
Did you have a different one?
What was that one that the last strategy?
So mine was different. Are you ready? Okay, so I did seventy-eight plus twenty. Plus ninety-eight. And then I did ninety-eight plus three. Which was a hundred and one. So everything is easier for me if I do it by tens and then add the smallest number last, 'cause you will lose me in my head if I do it any other way.
This shows you the difference in everybody's thinking. Can I say something? I've never used that strategy before and Ms. Albertson taught me.
Actually, one of the students taught you.
Yeah, yeah, one of the students, and then Carolyn's wherever that, that came out of left field, I don't know where that one's at.
Well, I mean, some of them, some of them will go, and then they pull it all together and you're like, oh, that's awesome. And that's what happens in class, doesn't it? Sometimes people say things and you're like, where are they going with this?
So do, hold me, ask this, do you ever, do you ever try to trim down somebody's answer to what they helped them think faster through it? 'Cause I, I, I didn't start that way when I was younger, but I changed it according to how my head works. And I'm actually a really good numbers person. And I'm just curious, like, do you ever?
We let the students go and, and if you watch the rest of that, one student goes off, like, right? And then all of a sudden it's like, wait a minute, and, and they figure it out, that doesn't make sense, but we don't ever stop them.
That's what I was asking. You don't, you don't ever change the process.
We, no, I mean, it's kind of like, are you sure that's the answer? Is that, does anybody else have that same answer? Can anyone help them explain their thinking? That kind of thing, and sometimes another student can jump and he goes, I think they were meaning to say, kinda like we all did. Um, with Kenny, is that, and, and then they processed through it and were able to do it.
Right, I guess that, that, it, it opens other people in the class then to, if they wanna change it that way, I guess they could change to see how every person does it.
Yes, and the great thing is, is it gives all students a fair opportunity to, to explain their thinking. A lot of times the students are like, well, that's not the right answer, I'm not gonna share it, or I didn't do it the way the teacher did. This way.
As long as you're getting the right answer.
Exactly, and they're, they're talking about the math, that's the important thing.
Dr. Shelton, can you talk about, is this something only going on at Elkhorn or is this all of the elementaries?
So I do not know about the other elementaries, but I know that Olivia has worked.
Let's consider equity.
It's available.
No, it's happening in all the elementaries.
It's available to all of them, yes. I just know what's happening at Elkhorn because I've witnessed it in the classrooms. But Olivia Hakmar has gone to various classrooms and working with teachers, um, throughout the district. That is, that is a fact, I'm just speaking to what is happening.
And this isn't part of Intu Math, this is something additional that we get. Um, this is very much, you have to teach somebody how to think about math in a different way. So I, I know when I was in math class, if you didn't have a formula, you had no idea how to solve it. Um, this teaches you how to come up with your own formula or how to actually think about math in a different way, so.
And not just memorize facts, like, we went through school and I could, you could rattle off a number to a record or to a tape and I could give you them, but I never understood it. My dad would always say, you know, multiplication's a faster way to add, da-da-da, and I'm like, what is he talking about?
Even in the biggest advanced, if you would share a way, I can see, like, I, I struggled with like geometry. I loved algebra, I hated geometry because it changed so much. Something like this would break it down much simpler, especially with kids your age and not your teacher.
Right, and make you feel like you are, you do know what you're doing.
Absolutely.
'Cause that's, that math is scary for a lot of kids because it seems.
It makes you think that, that, you know, obviously there's not one way.
Right.
Whenever we were in school, I was in school, it was, this is the correct way, if you're doing it wrong, you're doing it wrong. Not everybody is, obviously, not even close to that.
That's exactly right.
Dr. Shelton, if we could get a picture of you and your kids in front of the board, that was amazing.
Very good.
Oh, in front of this board? I thought you meant that board. Okay.
You're all grown up. Oh my gosh.
Studen' guys.
I was your math teacher in high school.
Oh, I didn't know, sorry.
I know. It's not fair. I missed you. You're doing great.
Good job, guys.
You did amazing.
Creator? Nice, congratulations. Good to see you. It's one of my old students. But that's what means, means I'm getting old.
Obviously.
I know, right?
Thank you, Dr. Shelton, thank you, students.
You two guys did great, thank you for coming.
Was that easier than you thought?
Were we as scary as you thought?
Hey, keep, keep strong with it, 'cause say what, I hate speaking in public. I hate.
They did.
And they, um, I will tell you, there was one of them that said, so we're the teacher, and he said, yes? But we don't know, he said, you don't have four years, you have twenty minutes, buckle up, let's go.
Be brave for twenty minutes, the rest of it will all go away.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is our approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four Job Corps corporate agreement. Dr. Bolingbourn.
If it pleases the board, we just wanted to bring you this updated agreement. It's very similar to in the years past with the Job Corps MOU agreement. Um, the only thing that's changed is on page five, uh, number five, we've just been more specific with how, uh, we will reconcile reimbursement towards the Job Corps to make sure that we're also covering the cost of the district incurs throughout the processing of Job Corps, um, students, data, things like that. It takes a lot of people at the school district to make that happen. Um, so we just wanna make sure that we're both, uh, equally being reimbursed for the time and efforts that it takes with the Job Corps. So this will actually use the actual data that we get in February for the students that attend the Job Corps, the ADA numbers that we get, 'cause a lot of things play into that and it, it fluctuates a lot throughout the year, so doing it month by month is not very accurate. So we've turned the agreement, what we're doing in February, we'll send them one family for the year, and then once we get that data in the next February, we'll work through that way. So, so similar, very similar to the past, this just clears up how we reimburse one another for it. So, if it pleases the board, we would love, uh, approval here.
First by Darren.
Second.
Second by Kaylin, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Next up is approval of the Knowledge Project partnership with Dr. Miller.
So this is a, again, what I was talking about in my academic report. Um, really just looking for a vote from the board, from the board in agreement to, um, allow the Knowledge Project to come into our school and work with our kids. Again, they would be working with our struggling readers and training our teachers both in letters training and showing them different interventions that can increase our reading scores.
So moved.
Wait, two firsts?
Whoever.
Kaylin. Kaylin then Rick.
Whatever is in first clicking order.
Any questions or comments?
No, thank you for, for like looking into that, I'm so excited about that, I think it's gonna be great.
All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Moving right along to approval of the Methods of Instruction Handbook, Dr. Miller.
So I recently created the Methods of Instruction Handbook, and this literally covers how a kid can get credit through Excelsior Springs. And so that also includes, um, extensively virtual learning. There is a ton of legislation happening right now with virtual learning and it changes all the time. Um, looking for an approval on this virtual learning handbook, it's been, um, since then we've had new legislature. Uh, the attorney went over it after, literally after I had submitted this last Thursday, and there are some new changes. So looking for a, I think the easiest way to do this is vote for this to come in and then I will bring it for ratifications with even, and I may have to bring it every month if they keep changing everything. Um, there's a lot of concern, um, for-profit organizations that are looking for virtual learning are actually, um, coming at school districts for the tone that they have in their, um, in the wording to, to parents. So you, if it has any kind of a tone to suggest that one way is better than another, if traditional is better than online, and I think you all are familiar with my tone well enough on the subject to know that, um, they changed just a few of the wordings, really just to mirror our board policy. So looking for, um, a vote to adopt this one, which is really in its entirety, there's some minor changes that I'll need to put in consent agenda as it comes through.
So moving. First by Darren.
Second.
Second by Rick, any questions or comments?
Thank you, 'cause that's tedious.
I am the queen of handbooks this year, I'm telling you. I've got a literacy handbook coming out this summer, you guys are really gonna wanna read it all.
All those in favor? Yeah, you gotta read it though.
It's a literacy handbook.
Yeah.
I mean, you're supposed to.
That passes six to zero. Do I have to read it?
Best question tonight, right?
Yeah, do I have to read it?
You lost them at, at long.
It's a podcast.
Next up is approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four Employee Benefits, Dr. Tomlinson.
Wanted to go ahead and present this before we, uh, put the budget in front of you, but the recommendation is gonna be that we increase the health cap up to five hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, per employee. Uh, that will cover, uh, most, if not all, of the incurred expenses of the premium increases. And then our dental went up slightly, vision slightly, I think life stayed the same, so our overall benefit package would be six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-six cents. Um, that's what we were asking for approval, then we'll move forward. That's the assumption in the budget that we'll present next, so I would like for your approval on this to start with.
So moving. First by Troy.
Second.
Second by Kaylin, all those in favor? Any questions?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Jesus. What was it previously?
So it went up twenty-five dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, I apologize for that. Hearing none, all those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Last up is the great one, the approval of the twenty-four budget.
It's what everyone's waited for, thanks for everyone who stuck it out because they knew this was gonna be the highlight of the evening. Wanted to really talk about, the assumptions for this budget are fairly straightforward. So the biggest assumption for this budget is that we are going to end with eight and a half million dollars in the bank when, at, on June thirtieth. We'll amend the actuals on our June twenty-seventh meeting for the end of the fiscal year. And if, so if we're above that eight point five million, we'll be starting off better, we'll probably finish better. If we start below that, it's gonna adjust down accordingly. So that's our best estimate for where we think we're gonna finish, uh, but we won't know until next month. So that's one assumption. The other assumption we've talked about twice tonight, and that has to do with assessed valuation, that'll depend on the assessors at the county level and how much tax revenue they are able to generate, and that will dictate how much comes back to us. There is a Hancock Amendment, if you're, if you remember talking about this in years past, what that means is, when assessed valuation goes up, we don't get all of it. We can only raise it as high as CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index. So for instance, if assessed valuation goes up ten percent, but CPI is five percent, we only get to capture that five percent of increase and we lose the rest. And that's when you roll back your tax rate so that you're not over generating taxes off of people. So, uh, we don't know what those numbers are gonna be.
Do we know CPI yet?
We don't, we'll have to take a look at the, at the fiscal year. It should be pretty good, we're hoping, we expect to see some decent numbers, so. Correct, so, uh, we might a little bit, but the, the higher CPI is, obviously the better it is for our revenue projections, but we don't know that yet. So that, those are some of the biggest basis here. Obviously, we have some, uh, one-time expenditures, so, uh, we are moving forward. Uh, we had a, uh, tomorrow is actually the deadline for our weight room renovation, so we'll be able to see what, what those bids come in at. Uh, we are extremely, uh, uh, optimistic that it will come in much under our four hundred thousand dollar cap, so we think we're gonna save a little bit on that and still get a really great remodel. Uh, we also have some money going into the Career Center for Grants, and that's actually gonna go out very soon. Uh, we're probably looking to do that in a two-year cycle, a part A and a part B, we're gonna split those up because of the way the grants work. Uh, so we have, those are some one-time expenditures. Uh, we also have our, uh, reading series, Wit Wisdom, uh, is gonna be, the largest expense for that will be next year. Uh, that's kind of a one-time, there are some ongoing expenditures for, um, some of the, uh, what are they called, uh, some of the workbooks? What are those called?
You call those consumables.
Consumables, that's what I was looking for, the consumables. So, right, those, uh, there's some ongoing expenses, but that, the majority of the expense is right up front. So you have to factor some of these things in. What's important is when you have one-time expenditures, you have to count for those in your budget, but then you know those are gonna fall off, so they're gonna create more opportunities, right, from an expenditure standpoint in years forward. What we really have to be careful to do is not say, oh, well, we spent, we're gonna have to spend that again, so let's spend it over here. You can't do that until you know where you're gonna end up next year, so that's gonna be kind of the trick of it. I have every expectation of having quarterly, uh, amendments to this budget, especially after our tax rate hearing. That's gonna see and track, track how we go. I wanted to highlight a couple things on here, I know you guys had this, uh, since last week, but if you notice some of the changes on our expectations, we have the last three years, uh, of our revenues there. We're taking a look at a total revenue expectation of about forty and a half million dollars, uh, for this year. Uh, that's actually down from the years before, and that's mostly because of, uh, federal funding that came through CARES and ESER. So that money's all dropping off now, so that's why you're seeing a slight step back on our revenue expectations. What we're hoping for is that might pop back up due to the assessed valuation, but that's where our buffer comes in. If you take a look at some of our expenditures, I really try to focus on the delta, right? And that's the change in percentage from last year to this year, to kind of get a feel. What we're trying to do is go through our budget and redistribute in the appropriate buckets for how we typically spend our money, uh, in the school district. So if you take a look, every once in a while you'll see a line, uh, for instance, the early childhood special ed, went up three hundred and sixty-one percent. That sounds alarming, what could be? Well, what happened is, before you had fifty-eight thousand dollars, you had one employee tied to that. Okay, well, there's more than one employee there. So when you actually appropriate all the employees in the early childhood special ed properly, then that number pops up. But it's not like it's an additional money that we weren't already spending there, it's just actually accounting for it appropriately. And if you notice, there's some areas too where we see some declines. Probably the biggest one is there's a fifteen percent decline in the executive administration budget. So that's actually a cutback in the number of employees that we're gonna have employed at executive administration. That's money that we put back in other areas of the district. Uh, trying to think, the, a couple of these you'll see, there's a, a multiple hundred percent increase, well, it went from four thousand to ten thousand. So like in the grand scheme of things, those aren't numbers that we typically concern ourselves with. All of this is after meeting with directors and cabinet members and principals to make, make sure that what we have for our budget is appropriating the amount of money that needs to be put there for a successful school year next year. Mind you, sometimes things go different, and that's why we make changes and amendments and we always bring those to you. So this is our best shot to get things started, we feel very confident about this. If you take a look, kind of the summary on the last page, our ending balance, if this were accurate as is, we would be at about eighteen and a half percent reserves at the end of next year. I would say a realistic expectation, I, I've worked on this thing for months now, I've done every possible scenario and expectation, left, right, and indifferent. Um, I've gotten as low as fifteen percent, as high as twenty percent. I think seventeen percent is really the median spot. Right now I'm sitting at eighteen and a half, and I'm hoping it'll be, get up to twenty with our assessed valuation, I think that's a possibility. Uh, but I also think there's possibilities that we might have some setbacks or other things pop up where we have to spend that we didn't plan on, we might end up at fifteen. So I think seventeen is the median, I am optimistic that it'll get closer to twenty, but it's gonna be in that range. And we'll have a lot more information as the year goes on and we'll update you on that, let you know where we're at, how we're doing, and, uh, you know, we're gonna manage it.
If you extrapolate, kind of what you know's going on over, say, the next two to three years, I mean, not hard numbers, but you see reserves climbing back up?
I think here's the key currently, so in the last couple of years, you've seen a, a steady decline like this, and you can't just switch this thing on a, on a corner, right, you can't turn it that fast. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna soften that decline right now, and then we're gonna get to be revenue neutral and then to start having some incline to build those back up. But the only way to accomplish that is to stop spending these one-off projects. And it's really difficult to do because there's gonna be. And it's really difficult to do because there's going to be something else that people want and they'll say, hey, this is a good thing. And it probably is a good thing, but it doesn't mean that that's the thing we need to be working on today. Maybe that needs to wait a little bit. So we need to prioritize where these one-time expenditures come and get the biggest bang for the buck on those and then have the discipline, the years, to go ahead and let those things fall off.